Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, September 20th, 2011. At this time, I would like to invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge. Mr. Stamey?
Dear Father, Lord Jesus, thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, just thank you so much. I pray tonight that you give each one of us wisdom and you give us knowledge, Lord, as we make decisions that affect this county and lead this county, Lord, I pray we make the right decisions. Lord, I pray for our leaders in Washington, they continue to guide our nation, Lord, be with them as they make even tougher decisions, Lord, be with them. Be with our troops abroad, keep them safe, Lord, and guide them safely back home to us. Lord, we ask these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. I need to make the following announcement. The following items were advertised for this meeting but have been tabled by staff and will not be heard this evening. They will be advertised for a later meeting. A rezoning, RZ-11-07, 2517 Atlanta LLC of McDonough, Georgia, request a rezoning from M1 Light Manufacturing to M2 Heavy Manufacturing for property located at 2517 Highway 42 North in Landlots 1 and 31 of the 7th District. The property consists of 15.391 plus or minus acres and the request is for a metals processing facility, and that's in District 4. Also being tabled tonight is the Unified Land Development Code text amendment, ULDC-AM-11-09, an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia to amend Chapter 2, Section 2.01.05A, mixed-use district as it pertains to not allowing or prohibiting a single use on a lot or parcel within the mixed-use zoning district in accordance with Sections 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. If you are here for either of those items, they will be tabled this evening and re-advertised for a future meeting. The agenda is a little bit backwards tonight. We have an item, a short item, that we need to take care of in executive session, and so this evening, we are going to do executive session first on the agenda, and then we'll return to conclude the remainder of the meeting. With that being said, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, land acquisition, and personnel matters. Have a motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Alletta, all in favor? I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries three zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries three zero. And I would like to offer an apology to those who have been waiting very patiently for that, the longest 30 minutes of your life, that it took us an executive session, and I do apologize for that. But moving on in the agenda, we have a wonderful proclamation to present at this time, and I'm going to read the proclamation. I know we have some representatives here to, I believe from DAR, to receive the proclamation, and then if you would like to share some thoughts on it, we would welcome you to do that. But this proclamation is Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, whereas September 17th, 2011 marked the 224th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia in 1787, and whereas during Constitution Week, we commemorate the legacy passed down from our nation's founders and recognize that our constitution has stood the test of time, steering our nation through times of prosperity and peace, and guiding us through the depths of internal conflict and war. And whereas because of the wisdom of those who shaped our nation's founding documents and the sacrifices of those who have defended America for over two centuries, we enjoy unprecedented freedom and opportunities, and whereas our constitution is not simply words written on an aging parchment, but a foundation of government, a protector of liberties, and a guarantee that we are all free to shape our own destiny. And whereas as we celebrate this document's profound impact on our everyday lives, may all Americans strive to uphold the duties and responsibility of citizenship as well as the constitution's vision of freedom and justice for all. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the week of September 17th through the 23rd shall be known as Constitution Week in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we join with other officials across the nation in recognizing the importance of our constitution and reaffirming our rights and obligations as citizens of this great nation to protect this founding document, this 20th day of September, 2011, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I know we do have some representatives here tonight, and I didn't know if you'd like to make some comments before we actually present the document. And if so, if you would step to the microphone, please.
We're proud to be the first DAR of Henry County. This is our Regent Helen Busman, and it's just such a privilege for us to come and ask you for this proclamation. I have some books here on the constitution that we'd like to present to you, some very interesting facts, and in our appreciation for your doing this for us this year.
Thank you. Helen, did you want to say anything as the Regent?
No.
All right, we're going to present the proclamation to you. Moving on in the agenda, we have a presentation by the Exegence Medical Group. Good evening.
First of all, we'd like to thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. On behalf of the entire Exegence group, we are thrilled to talk a little bit about our vision for a medical campus in Henry County. If we can go to the presentation? First of all, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the Exegence group. We were started in 2000 by Dr. Greg Daniel. Dr. Daniel is an emergency medicine physician, he's a surgeon, he's served in the U.S. Air Force. From my vantage point, he's truly an entrepreneur. He started the group in managing emergency departments. He was asked to put together a proposal to manage emergency departments for a large health system in Western New York, and he said, "I can do that." And he did it, and immediately began managing over 100,000 patients. Today, we see over 600,000 patients. We also do hospitalist programs, which are inpatient programs. We have really begun to look at urgent care as a solution to a lot of medical challenges in this country. We have seven urgent care centers with two opening soon. We also have occupational medicine programs, and we are, recently have gotten into private As a company, we have over 300 employees or independent contractors. We are headquartered in Amherst, New York, just outside of Buffalo. Yes, it is cold there, and no, it's not snowing yet. We actually, in addition to managing medical practices, we believe in truly being invested in our projects. We have real estate holdings in excess of $30 million. And this year, we believe our revenues are going to be in excess, and we hope tremendously in excess of 75 million. You can't quite see it on the screen, but on the right, it's a photo of Dr. Daniel in one of our procedure rooms in one of our urgent care centers. We were asked, "Why Henry County?" And first and foremost, we believe that it's medically underserved, and by medically underserved, it's not that there aren't services here, it's that your population and the types of services can be much more convenient. We really believe in bringing our vision, really a new vision for medical care, really closer to where people are. Right now, you have a Henry County Medical Center that sees over 60,000 patients each year through their emergency department. That's a lot of patients. And what we're going to do is really create a place for those patients who don't need to be in an emergency department, a more appropriate care for episodic care. That's just one of the solutions that we have. Tim's going to talk a little bit more about some of the other things, but another reason why Henry County is, we really see it as poised for growth. There is the infrastructure in place, or it's being put in place, and we really, when we look at areas and municipalities, we really look for partnering with the governments, with the people who live there. It's really more of a partnership for us, rather than us coming in and putting down a vision. It's a partnership. And we believe that the number-one rule in real estate is location, location, location. We believe that the Fairview Road is a phenomenal location, it's poised for growth, and we truly believe that by our investment, we will be creating numerous jobs and really getting our return. So we think it's a win-win for all of us.
One of the things that's very important to understand, again, with the Henry County, is that medical corridors are born, and people go to medical corridors, and they make the people come to medical corridors. This is, again, what Claire was saying, is medically underserved in Henry County, so we're going to create within the community a place for people to come so they don't have to travel. We're making a destination medical campus. Within the campus, you're looking at urgent care, we're looking at ambulatory services, we're also looking at medical office buildings, along with some mixed use across the street. One of the things that Commissioner Holmes had said for his Henry County vision is a dream of green wellness, et cetera. The fountains are very important. Could you go to the site plan here, please, for me? As you can see, this is a preliminary draft of our site plan that we're looking at. What we have on the bottom half of the screen is the medical. From a Fairview on the left-hand side of the screen, West Pinola has been, will be rerouted through the middle of this piece of property, 30 acres. We're talking about urgent care close to Fairview, moving down ambulatory services into some medical office space. Across the street, one of the things that Dr. Daniel has been very good at, and you hear it when you talk about Disney, it's the art of waiting, okay? None of the stuff that is on the bottom half of the screen, any one of us wants to go do, all right? It's all medical, unless you really itch into being in a medical setting. So across the street, we're talking about possible hotel, you're looking at boutiques, shopping, eateries, and from a wellness perspective, as you can see, we are truly committed to the greenness of the site plan, and as you can, as you see through the, on this, there are some very skinny lines that go around the entire site plan. That is for walking, biking trails, it's access for the community. Can we go back now, please? Thanks. So the park-like, the greenness is very important to us, and I know it is for the Henry County community. Going through the medical campus and retail center, urgent care, imaging, ambulatory surgery, dental, medical, and it really is up to what the community is going to request, but we do have a vision for what we can put up there from a square-footage standpoint. And again, there's really not a whole lot of people who dream of going to the doctor every day, so in the case of, in the art of waiting across the street, there could be something to take your mind off of things. You do all have, at this point, I believe, the economic impact study. We're talking about approximately a $36 million direct investment, which we believe will yield approximately $185 million in economic development, approximately 1,300 to 1,400 jobs, whether they be direct from a construction standpoint, working in the medical community, or support services for these individuals who are going to need other services when they come to the community. Our timeline, it's based on the Fairview and the West Pinola SPOLOX projects. It makes no sense for us to ramp it up, it makes no sense for us to slow it down, it makes every sense for us to come into the community and work with the community on a project that is going to enhance the community. So we anticipate working within the parameters of the roadway on Fairview, the widening, the change of West Pinola to bisect our piece of property, which, by the way, we are under due diligence, we have it under contract, and we expect to close on that in January 2012, at which point our group will have approximately $2 million invested in this project. We're looking at, all told, early half of 2015 where this project would be done. Any questions?
First of all, let me say thank you for your commitment to Henry County. We in the Fairview community in District 5, as well as, from a county perspective, really appreciate Exegence really believing in Henry County, and we welcome you with, you know, with open arms, pretty much. I think the medical community in Henry County would probably want to know how Exegence worked directly with the medical community.
Pitch that back to Claire, if you wish.
Well, certainly, looking at what's available in Henry County, we will certainly take a look at what is not presently in Henry County, or what is, what we call in what areas are underserved. For example, right now, there are five ambulatory surgical centers in Henry County. Of those, there are no orthopedic ambulatory surgical centers. There are no surgery centers that we look at that you could do same-day sort of diagnostic surgeries, the kinds of things that really are inappropriate for large hospitals, which really are more for inpatient care. So we're looking at those kinds of treatments that really people are traveling outside of the county to get. How we want to work with the current medical community, any community that we go into, we truly look for partnerships. So obviously, it's not, we're not bringing practitioners here, we really will be working with the providers that are already in Henry County, or we will be looking to attract those that, you know, that we, that can't accommodate the kinds of needs that we see.
So you will be looking to work with APED mod or Emory or private medical groups?
Absolutely. I think that also what is key in this project, and the way that we've gone about the project, is certainly working very closely with Commissioner Holmes, but working with SPOLOX. We're not coming in and dictating. There were several times that I personally was asked, "Well, does this meet your timeline?" I'm not here to dictate when Fairview Road, we're not here to dictate when Fairview Road or West Pinola gets changed. Those are projects that are near and dear for the community, and we can come in and we can work as partners. We're not coming in to, we will not dictate anything, we will work hand in hand.
And I'd also like to say that we have a lot of experience joint venturing with large medical groups. The Catholic Health System in Western New York, we're looking at some private practice down in Florida with a large health system in Texas. So our, we understand that in order to really be successful and to really have the kind of negotiating power, that we really need to work with groups that are already in a community.
I have one more question. Tim, as everyone knows, you know, I believe that Fairview District 5 needs an upgrade, and we have put some things in place that I think will accomplish that. You know, I want to see a health and wellness community, and I want to see an area where people can come and congregate and do business. I don't want to see any more of our businesses leave, I want to bring business back, and I think your project is the first step in making that happen. With that said, I know you kind of touched on the beautification and walking paths. Can you talk about that in a little bit more detail, what the walking paths around the campus will look like, and the fountains and those type of things?
Absolutely. When we've gone into different communities, and certainly the research needs to be made from a Henry County, or we need to do the research in Henry County, we have several examples of architecture that we would present to the community to see what is required of the community, not what the wants are, but what is required of the community. You're taking a look at circling the entire campus, I mean, this is a 30-acre piece of property, getting people walking around campus in the green. I've been in front of several committees, boards such as yourselves, where we've presented landscape architectural plans that were thrown out because someone didn't like it. We take no offense to that. What does your community want? We want to understand exactly what you want. Right now, this is conceptual, visionary, we are open to input on how do you want to see it? We are talking about two large water pools in the center of this development, which would be, could turn into fountains, kids running around, they actually, I mean, if you've seen sort of the fountains, Claire had brought this up, where was the one in Chicago?
In Chicago.
You know, they're shooting up, they're very nice to look at, they add quite a bit to the community, plus they're interactive. The whole entire thing, again, the art of waiting, no one wants to be there. Maybe you want to go to the restaurant across the street without having to go to the medical stop, but it's very important for us to become part of the community and be embraced by the community. We do not see anything like this anywhere around Henry County, all right? Any of the connecting counties up through Atlanta, we do not see this. And we think that this would be a jewel for Henry County and make it a destination medical, medical destination.
I think, I think what's key, and you mentioned, and some people may have missed it, but this project has the opportunity to bring almost 1,400 jobs to Henry County. And with that, I want to say thanks again, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Any other board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
With the exception of the Amherst, New York headquarters, is there another campus like this that Exegence has anywhere?
We are working right now in North Austin, which is in Round Rock, to 10-acre campus with the mixed medical use. We are also looking at retail, there is a convenience store, a gas station going on there, so yes, we are working on another one as well.
But not in existence at this point?
No.
Okay. The other question, and I'm certainly not a medical authority by any stretch, do you have to get a certificate of need or anything similar to what hospitals have to have to build a facility such as this?
For most of what we are proposing, you do not need a certificate of need. The ambulatory surgery center, which we are in, and we are doing our due diligence on, may or may not, depending on what is, what we end up putting there.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for the presentation, I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you, and probably a good place to come back and visit during those winter months, and we'll have to twist your arm to get you back down here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to move on to planning and zoning services. We have a public hearing, an appeal, AP-11-02, by Red Lobster of McDonough, Georgia, of the administrative denial of a signed permit application for property located at 1846 Jonesboro Road. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planning and Zoning Services Department, exhibit number 12. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is regarding the Red Lobster at Henry Town Center. This location has recently been renovated, and part of the renovation included the updating of the signs. You can see two signs here, and there's also a third sign on the left-hand side. The applicant submitted four wall sign applications for the signs that you see and the one on the left, and also one in the middle. And the one in the middle is the item that's before you tonight. There is a master sign plan that was approved in December of 2001 between the Simpler Company and the Board of Commissioners, and it was allowed after a variance. And what it says is that the out parcels are limited in their wall signage to three, and so when the applicant submitted four wall sign applications, I approved three and denied the fourth. The applicant has appealed the administrative denial, and the applicant's letter of appeal states that the center sign could be considered an extension of one of the other two signs that were approved, and thereby meet the intent of the master sign plan. In my research, that is not something that the staff can agree with. Our Unified Land Development Code regarding signage and wall signs states that "No wall sign shall cover wholly or partially any wall opening, nor project beyond the ends or the top of the wall to which it is attached." In other words, a wall sign can extend beyond the corner of the wall, and you can see clearly that this middle sign is on a different wall than either one of the wall signs that were approved. That is- That is a typical definition, and within your packets, you've got an exhibit for the Planner's Dictionary. It gives a typical definition of a wall sign from Duluth, Georgia. Duluth says, "A sign, a wall sign is a sign attached to or painted on the exterior wall of a building. The total lettering on one facade of a building or structure shall constitute one wall sign." So clearly, it's typical for a wall sign to be limited to the wall on which it is affixed. In addition to that, if you'll note the staff's report in your exhibits, under comments, I give the definition of sign from our Unified Land Development Code, and about halfway down, it says that, "For the purpose of determining the number of signs, a single display surface or a single display device containing different elements that are organized, related, or composed to form a unit shall be considered one sign. Where different elements are displayed in a random manner without an organized relationship to each other, or where there is reasonable doubt as to the relationship of different elements to each other, each element shall be considered to be a separate sign." These signs are clearly on different walls, and I think that that by itself is enough to introduce reasonable doubt that it would be the same sign. And so therefore, the staff recommends that you affirm the administrative denial of the fourth wall sign application.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
I'm going to simplify this. They want to put a lobster-
They do.
-on the front of the building, because it's Red Lobster. If they had chosen to paint that lobster on the front, would that have been considered a sign?
Yes, ma'am, it would have.
What if they had hung a lobster from the inside of the building so you could see it from that window? Would that have been considered a sign?
Not only that, if you'll notice, the way the Red Lobster was, it was glass. If it had been left as glass, then we could have approved it as a window sign. And if it was glass, if they had chosen to hung the Red Lobster within the glass, that would have met with approval as well. But this renovation has already taken place, and so it's a wall.
Okay. I don't see us spending a lot of time on this. Does any board member have a question about the lobster that you'd like to ask Stacy before I call the applicant board?
I have a, a comment. And Stacy, believe me, every time you come up here, I, I don't want you to think that we've beaten you up, because you evidently, you get the, the bad faces where, where it's always questionable. But my, my first question is going to be this. How would Chick-fil-A get by with hanging a cow on top of their sign? And you see even, um, billboards, you see many things where they have gone in and have hung, had the cow stuck up on, and it absolutely was more square footage than what the quote sign allowed. We have airplane signs, as you well know, they're non-conforming at this time-
Right.
-in this county. We have many different signs, but explain to me how Chick-fil-A could do this and, and add a cow to an existing sign, and it not be considered another sign?
Right. In short, I, I can't. I'm not familiar with an instance of Chick-fil-A that's come across our desk, that we've had to approve with, with cows and, and extra displays and such as that. But I would draw your attention again to the photo, and you'll notice that, as it is today, there is no Red Lobster on this building. So it, it hasn't been critical to their, their store up to present time.
This store has just gone through a major inside and outs, interior and exterior renovation, though, has it not?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Okay. I, I, in fact, I, I ate there last week, and I saw there was a change, so I knew that something was going on, I didn't know about the sign at the time.
Is that all this?
That's it for me.
Does any board member have a question for staff?
I'm sorry, I find this rather comical. Is the applicant here? Yes, if you would please step to the podium and state your name and address, and we'll give you 15 minutes.
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name's Charlie Shalley, with Site Enhancement Services. First off, Commissioner, thank you for your business. Just to kind of elaborate on what Mr. Jordan had, had stated, the Red Lobster recently went through a major renovation, and we're choosing markets and restaurants in certain areas that we're looking to, to renovate and to, I guess, bring up to what the new standard is. And the old standard that you see with the glass front, as Mr. Jordan stated, had we hung the lobster behind the glass, we wouldn't be here before you this evening. But because we did do this renovation, and because we are looking for more of a unified look within the marketplace, um, the lobster, or critter, as we call it, has become one of our branding features. It doesn't carry any commercial copy, it doesn't carry any significant commercial message, other than when tied into this location, it does help to accent the message. I would like to point out that because of the unique architecture and footprint of the building, it is a rectangle with a cut corner, so technically, the lobster where we're proposing to have it placed on that center, on the south elevation, and the Red Lobster sign actually do mesh up, so they are actually the same plane. In addition, this property's allowed a maximum of 300 square feet in total area of signage. That's a lot of square feet that we don't need to use, never proposed to use, and are still not proposing to use. Even if we drew a, an imaginary rectangular box around the Red Lobster on the south elevation, which for the purposes of this drawing would be the right elevation and the lobster itself, that box would be 145 square feet in area, bringing our total to only 262 square feet, still under the 300 that were allowed. The signs that we have currently on the south, the west, and the north elevation are all exceptionally, they're all very important due to the fact that they have different modes of, um, traffic that use these as wayfinding devices. The lobster is really just a, a tool that will help tie in this feature and this entrance feature into the overall property. It's not atypical to, to what is also in place out there currently. The Longhorn Steakhouse, which is directly to the west, has a similar situation. Mexican restaurant that's just to the north of us as well. There's different architectural features that break up elements, we're asking for the same consideration, not for more square footage, it's actually dramatically less than we would be allowed. Thank you.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant?
Because this is a public hearing, I have to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the addition of the lobster to the building. Okay? No comments on that? All right, if there's nothing more from the board, I would look to someone for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, so we're going to have a motion to overturn the staff's recommendation and to approve the applicant's request by Mr. Stamey, and a second by Mr. Holmes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to finance at this time. Stacy, you did, you do kind of get the rough ones, don't you?
I enjoy it.
We, we appreciate all your hard work in, in the zoning department, thank you. All right, we have a resolution requesting approval of agreements for the sale of aviation fuel and the rental of aviation fueling trucks, and that's our presenter's Mike Bush, exhibit number six.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. After yesterday's discussion, we contacted Ascent Aviation Group and kind of gave them some of the thoughts that you guys had asked about. One about, it was a three-year contract on all three of these, and, and we're freshly in this business with the airport, and are looking at potentially a management-type company. And they agreed that we could go on a 30-day, a month-by-month basis with a 30-day cancellation. This agreement, these agreements say, "The agreement shall become effective on October 1st, 2011, and shall continue month-to-month until suspended or revoked with 30 days written noticed by either party." So we've eliminated the, the process of how long it takes, it's 90 days to get out of a contract, out of this contract if we need to. The other issue was about the, the age of the vehicles, that the fueling trucks that we've got on here, and the maintenance of those trucks. The maintenance of the trucks, we, we will be required to, every three months or every 250 operating hours, to provide them with a copy of a refueler preventative maintenance schedule, and that maintenance schedule consists of changing the engine oil and filter, lubricate chassis, drive shaft, PTO shaft, U-joints, check coolant, check air filter, belt tensions, fire extinguishers, lights, battery cables, just a normal process each month, and then anything. Ascent would be responsible for engine, drivetrain, main pump system component, uh, main pumping system components, structural components of the refueler, and Ascent will promptly correct any deficiency reported by the LEC. So the, the issue of there being an old truck and them having a lot of maintenance issues, those maintenance issues are Ascent's issue to deal with. We just actually talked to the people at the airport today, and the last time that they did this three-month report, they let, let Ascent know that the fire extinguishers needed to be replaced, Ascent sent us new fire extinguishers down, they were put on the trucks. So, uh, the issue we have right now is, we can go back and get newer trucks, but if you get a newer truck, your rental, your $400 a month lease fee may go up, especially if we buy brand-new trucks. So at this point, we have three agreements, all three of them are month-to-month, on the current equipment that we have out there to, you know, so that we can start the operations October 1st. I'll take any other questions if I didn't answer the ones from yesterday.
Does any board member have a question or comment? We're all questions answered from yesterday. Okay. You have before you a resolution of the board that is approving agreements, in plural, with Ascent Aviation Group for the sale of aviation fuels and the rental of aviation fueling trucks, and I will entertain a motion from the board.
I'll approve it.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
At this time, we need to amend the agenda and to table the next item, which is a resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough for the Exchange of Services. The county manager has informed me that he and the county attorney need to make a few changes to that, and also to amend the agenda to add an, a personnel item that Mr. Holder will be sharing with us in just a moment, if I can get a motion to amend the agenda for those two items. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0. Mr. Holder?
Madam Chair, I'd like to present this resolution of the, to the, of the Henry County Board of Commissioners concerning petition of Jeffrey Edwards for review of a decision of the county manager and that the board deny Mr. Edwards' petition for review.
We have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Defer to the county attorney, but with, with only four members here, I think three would not be a quorum, so therefore, a vote, so therefore, you may need to vote.
I just discussed that briefly. I believe the Roberts rules require a majority of those present at the meeting-
Okay.
-for it to be a, for it to be the official vote. But if you want to go back and change, I, I will have to check that, but I think I'm pretty accurate on that, so.
Just, just a question, I'm not an attorney, just wanted to be sure.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Holder, I appreciate that.
Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings, Monday, October 3rd at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, October 4th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, October 17th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, October 18th at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular board meetings. If there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, a question?
Yes.
Are we going to cancel this?
No.
Okay. I just thought there was a member that was going to be attending the conference, and...
There are, but we are going to have a majority of board members to hold a meeting, and if any items are pertaining to their district, we will ta, we will move those items to the, to the later date in October to give them that opportunity to attend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Holmes, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0, we stand adjourned.